I'll call this meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Delka?
Here.
Leyland?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Please join us in a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion on the agenda as proposed or amended?
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 The agenda is adopted. Public comments. Is there anybody in the room from the public that wishes to make comment on something that's not on the agenda? Yes, come on.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, supervisors. My name is Justin Jensen. I'm the Regional Director for Senator Joni Ernst. Just here, wanted to listen in, see what's going on with the county. And if there's anything our office can ever do, if you're working with federal agencies or pursuing federal grants, please feel free to reach out. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else in the room today? Is there anybody online that wishes to make public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to proclamations. This is a resolution to proclaim the month of September as National Suicide Prevention in Action Month. Was there a motion? I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
As I moved and seconded, would someone like to read the...
Chris, you want to read it, or...?
Um, sure, I'll...
Give it a shot?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Ikus was supposed to be there this morning, and I don't know, he's running late or had something come up.
He's here, Ms. Leyland.
Okay, super.
Whereas with September being recognized as Suicide Awareness Month, the National Suicide Prevention in Action Month proclamation was created to raise the visibility of mental health and proactive suicide prevention resources in our community. We also want to start the conversation to de-stigmatize it and help connect people with the appropriate support services. And whereas according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, suicide is the second leading causing death among individuals between the age of 10 and 34, with more than 48,000 people dying by suicide annually in the United States. And whereas according to Hope for the Day, with an average of 132 suicides completed daily, and each one directly impacting 100 additional people, including friends, service members, family, social media connections, and neighbors, we can safely assume that everyone has been impacted by suicide. And whereas Blackhawk County cites publicly, it is fully behind, it's full support behind those who work in the field of mental health, education, and law enforcement. And whereas global organizations like Hope for the Day and our local mental health partners serve on the front lines of the war that many refuse to discuss due to the stigma. And whereas we encourage all residents to take time to understand mental health through education and recognize that we need to take care of our mental health while we take care of others. Now therefore it be resolved that we, the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2023 as National Suicide Prevention in Action Month in Blackhawk County.
Good job.
As everybody knows, this is an issue that punches right to my soul. My, I lost my beautiful husband, Logan, to suicide on December 6th of 2021. And we just need to continue to change access to mental health here in this community. When Logan made that call into Blackhawk Grundy to see his provider earlier that month, just days before he died, he was told that they couldn't see him until after Christmas. And that was too late for Logan, and nothing can change that. He's dead. He's gone. He's what's stolen from me. And that's the failure of our mental health system. It's the failure of the state. It's the failure of lawmakers. It's the failure of the community. And I have to live with that trauma the rest of my life, and it kills me every damn day.
Good morning, everyone. Tommy Ikus, Blackhawk Grundy Mental Health Center. Thank you for taking the time to review this proclamation. I think the last time we did it was in 2016. Briefly, we've had a coalition in Blackhawk County since 2014. Called the Cedar Valley Coalition on Suicide Prevention and Support. Started with a UNI federal grant in 2014, when that grant ended in 2017, we picked it up. We have about 150 people on our email distribution list. We meet monthly and have done a lot of good work, but as Supervisor Schwartz mentioned, we got a lot of work to do. Suicide rates declined in the United States in 2019, 2020. Increased 5% in '21, and the recent data from the CDC said it went up again 2.6% in 2022 with about 50,000 deaths. That's one every 11 minutes. That's too many. That figure, if it isn't staggering alone, does not pale in comparison to the 12.3 million people annually who seriously think about suicide, the 3.5 million Americans that plan a suicide attempt, and the 1.7 million Americans who actually attempt suicide. Nationwide average is 14.5 people per every 100,000. Iowa is 17.5. So we got some work to do. Lots of reasons why that I won't go into. My only message is that treatment does work. Help is available. Supervisor Schwartz also mentioned, and I've been beating this drum for 35 years, access to mental health care is terrible in the United States. Wasn't too many years ago, I had, I was just comparing notes with Brian in terms of the shortage of attorneys. A few years ago, we had 17 therapists. I now have 3.7. I can't find them. So how do you expand services and get people access when there's no staff to take care of it? And the pandemic has created essentially a tidal wave of new referrals to our organization. So we do work in partnership with a lot of other mental health providers in town. We have a monthly meeting of all the mental health providers trying to do a better job at coordinating care, improving access, but we got a lot of work to do. So appreciate your acknowledgement. The bridges on Sunday will be turned, the colors of the suicide prevention colors in Waterloo. We'll be on the Steel Report soon, and got some guest editorials in the Waterloo Courier. So I appreciate this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no further comments, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Thank you.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Next is Claims and Payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and direct to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
They moved and seconded. Ms. Wiedner?
Good morning, Board. Our claims payments today are $187,620.29. Really nothing significant in there this time. The Sheriff's 60-40 Fund, we're paying $190.42. Everything appears to be in order, unless you have any questions.
All right, if there are no questions, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Little?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Next, we will receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas. I don't have an update on the road conditions today, but I do have an update nevertheless. So the Engineers' Office, our department, we are preparing for our FY '25 budget and our five-year plan update. And I am proposing to replace our main mechanic shop and our offices and two of our outbuildings, our shops at that facility, in the five-year plan. A good portion of those three buildings were built between 1958 and 1961. So they are over 60 years old. So they are aging facilities. So of course, this will be a very major expense, and I would very much appreciate your consideration, your input, as we go through this process. In order for us to get ready for this, we are going to be visiting other nearby shops, other county shops that have been completed in the recent past, as well as some other municipalities' shops that have been completed. I'd invite you to go along on those trips. I'd also like for you to come out and see our Longfellow shop before we begin the budget meetings this, you know, in November or January. Definitely like, we'll keep you posted on those field trips to see those other shops, so that we can be better prepared to talk about these in the upcoming months and years. So I'll be emailing you information with that, with those dates. Can I answer any questions right now on this?
Kathy, Kathy, this is Tom. Did you ever make contact back with that individual on that situation on railroad tracks I was working on?
Yes, I did talk with him and told him that the railroad would be replacing that entire crossing before the end of the fiscal year of June 30th of next year. So the railroad says it will not happen until next calendar year, but hopefully a year from now, there will be some new, that will be completely replaced.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Are there other department heads?
Board, Amanda Fezremire, Human Resources Director. So just really quick, just want to give update. The marketing position closed yesterday. We had 37 applicants for the total. And so we are working on sorting through those candidates to kind of present to the board as to how, you know, they align with each other. Just want to give you an idea of, you know, right now, I probably have about anywhere from 12 to 14 that don't meet the minimum quals, which the preference was a bachelor's degree in journalism, you know, public relations, marketing, and at least one year of related experience. We would entertain, you know, someone that would be qualified with, that didn't have a degree but had substantial experience. So that kind of removes about 12 candidates, but that still leaves quite a few that really meet those qualifications. So with redacting everybody's information, that may take us a bit of time to go through the applicantations and actually redact that to then send to the board. But I am considering giving you guys an assessment report, which shows the candidates and the ones that meet minimum quals and those that meet kind of the preferred quals, which would be a bachelor's degree and anywhere from one to three or more years of experience. If you have any feedback as to that, because it might be kind of a lot to sort through, I don't anticipate us meeting until the end of this month to give you guys adequate time to review and do your own kind of rating as to your top, you know, five or six. But then we can come back together at the end of this month and discuss that, those candidates in closed session for, if we have authorization, and then to determine interviews. But we'll try this, and if it's not, you know, the best process, we'll have a, we'll come up with something else. But it's a little different navigating it with all five of the board members, so. Any questions at all?
Amanda, just to be clear, I was going to say, so you can provide us the assessment with your initial assessment, I guess, of qualifications and preferred, maybe qualifications? You can do that without providing names and redacting a lot of information. Is that correct?
I could, oh yeah, we could do. The assessment report includes their first name, last name, related work experience in years. It asks about prior experience in like Adobe Creative Suite, web design, publication software, video production, social media, press releases, asks about a driver's license, asks what their bachelor's degree is, and then we ask an open-ended question. Please briefly describe your experience as it relates to this position. So that is in a spreadsheet. That might be easier for you guys to digest, and we could more easily redact the names and just give, you know, applicant A through M, as opposed to trying to redact, because some of the applicants included almost portfolios to go in and try to redact all of that. And the application itself is eight pages. So that would be quite a bit of work to try and go through and redact. So I can start with the spreadsheet, but you won't necessarily get all the materials. You know, it's just that limited. We can start with that, see how you guys work off that. Obviously, when we get to the interviews and we get to select candidates, you'll see everything they submitted. But open to any feedback about that.
I know we talked about it just briefly last weekend, but I just thought maybe, yeah, because it is going to be so much work and would delay things even more, if we could maybe do the assessment as the first part and then see how we looked like that or dislike that, I guess, as a tool before we go on? To redacting everything, you know, from all those particular, like you said, you said there was how many? 37 minus the 12, so we've got quite a few to go through.
Right. So I'm open to, you know, what you...
Yes.
But we certainly could still, I mean, the simplest thing would be that if I just routed them to each of you in the system, you would log in, you would see those candidates that meet minimum quals, meet preferred quals, but you're going to see everything. There's not going to be that way to redact it for that kind of objective, you know.
And that's typically been what we've done before with positions, especially that are responsible to the board, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah. So it kind of depends on how you...
Who would you, Amanda, this is Tom, when you talk about redacting, the purpose of that is because who doesn't see it?
Well, so we've done that on occasion. It's like a blind review, so that, because some of the names, whether they're internal candidates and external candidates, it's just a way to try and be more objective, I guess, when you're just really looking at the content and not so much the name. It's used pretty widely in like private sector. We've used it on occasion here. In the Health Department, I've used it mostly when I had a supplemental questionnaire that I sent out and got responses, and then I didn't want to like, you know, just be a bit more objective as to those responses and how the candidate answered it as opposed to what was just on their application. So it would be removing just the names of the applicants. And there was some interest in that.
Yeah, I don't really care about the names, but the board will get the full application, right? With nothing redacted?
I mean, if that was requested, yeah. I mean, I guess, that's what I'm trying to understand the process a little bit more is to, and we certainly, when we get down to like our top list of those that we're going to interview, everything, you know, there won't be anything redacted when we have our shortlist for those to be interviewing. It's in the time where you guys are trying to kind of determine your top five, if that would be helpful to remove names, to just, or not. I mean, you don't have to do it. We certainly don't do it.
I think it's, I mean, I know that it's extra work, but I think that it is a good practice for us. And I think it's, this is a good opportunity for just to try and see how this works for us. But it is, I mean, it is an increasingly adopted HR practice for hiring and selecting candidates and making sure that implicit bias, you know, stays out of the question.
Yep.
I think it's a good practice. My only concern, like if we only had 12 that made the cut thus far, just, I'm just worried about 25 being so many and the extra work it creates for HR.
If you would like, we could kind of do our initial, where it would say, okay, maybe we've, it's the top 10 that we move forward based on the job description, based on our, you know, but that might, our top 10 may still not be your top 10 either. But it should be, it will be in line with the job description and the qualifications and that experience.
I think part of the difficulty here is a lot of this position is ultimately going to be looking at their proof, looking at their work. And so to redact all of that would be nonsensical. And so basing it off of pretty standardized questions with, you know, yes or no questions or quick answer, and then one longer answer. Theoretically, I like the idea. I'm a little nervous about maybe foregoing what could be a really good candidate, or maybe the other side bringing somebody within that top 10 that maybe on their proof and on their work doesn't necessarily hit the bar that we're looking for. But I could go either way on this one. Again, as a matter of principle, I like the redacted. But from a matter of practicality?
That's right.
I'm a little concerned that we might, I don't want to, I don't want to go too heavy on principle and sort of get stuck where we turn away from maybe some of the top candidates because we aren't able to see their work.
I think what is tough is with that assessment report, you don't get to see the portfolio without, unless I go through, and if we do the redacting, then I'm going to be going through. Some of these included, you know, which we certainly can, you know, do. But but yeah, I kind of, we can think it over this week, you know, we can start and see how that, I mean, I still have to get through those that applied this weekend, you know, and can provide an update next week, or, but if you guys want to kind of set a direction, and maybe that's not appropriate in a department head update piece, but I wanted to at least bring it, you know, see where you guys were and just bring that up, so. But yeah, the assessment at least could give you guys a snapshot. And we certainly could have redacted, that's easy to redact and just put it by applicants, but I don't know if that's, I think you're still going to want to see the content that all of them. And that way, I could just route them to you, those that meet minimum quals, those that meet preferred, and still route the assessment to you to kind of see how we came up with our top 10.
I like that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
So, but thank you for being open to suggestions and feedback. It's a, you know, we don't have, since this is a new position, it's not like one I can say that, oh, this is how we've done it in the past. But we'll start with that and then, but I still think the end of this month, just to give you all time to sort through, is that reasonable? I don't want to rush into a closed session next week or even in two weeks. So probably September 26, maybe around there. So, okay. Thank you very much.
Well, and I appreciate, Tabitha, that, I know you proposed this initially, so I appreciate that you're open to, like I said, kind of making it work, whatever needs to happen to make this, like I say, a working and useful tool, so.
No.
But yeah, I like the assessment, or I like at least making that first cut and then routing them to all of us, rather than all redacting a lot of it.
Yeah.
So we'll get the assessment out to you, that kind of summary to you this week, and then we'll start routing candidates. It is, now, we're kind of changing applicant tracking systems, but that's not until like November, or we might even put that off a little bit till December. But it will be, I'll need to, if you haven't accessed, probably all haven't accessed the system in a while, so we'll have to just revisit logging into that with your email, and I'll send out instructions for that. And if you have any, you know, issues, just let me know. But that way, you can just see everything they've submitted that we've seen as well. So, and all right.
All right, thank you.
You know, at least have some time on this end. I mean, I know we were trying to do this early in the process, but the January 1st date does give us at least some time to kind of explore how this works if we're doing a different process. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other department heads or elected officials in the room or online which give an update today? All right, we will move on to the minutes approved for the August 29th meeting.
So moved.
Second?
It's moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Minutes are approved. Next, we will approve the consent agenda. What this will be approved with a single resolution. Is there something that someone wishes to pull out to discuss?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Hearing no discussion. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Delka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Moving on to other business. Item A, this is a motion that the personnel requisition for the county, for assistant county attorney full-time in the county attorney's office be approved as recommended by Brian Williams, county attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Next is a motion that the personnel requisition for the victim slash witness coordinator full-time in the county attorney's office be approved as recommended by Brian Williams, county attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
Does Brian happen to be in the room today?
Yes.
Okay, great. He had just mentioned in his email that the position was somewhat delayed during to accessing some type of system. And I just wondered what that was, I guess, because I was totally unfamiliar with that.
We had to get access to Waterloo's Axon system that we got about three weeks ago. It's our ability to access much of their digital technology, which will be a big portion of this particular position's job with regard to discovery. They've had it since 2020, and we just got access, I think, two, three, four weeks ago. So it took a little bit, now we're still figuring it out.
Okay, great. Well, thanks very much. I just, I didn't understand, so I just thought too, if that was the other reason for the delay, I'm just curious. So thank you very much.
Yep.
All right, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Next is a motion that the travel request submitted by Amanda Fezremire, Human Resources Director, be approved and directed chair to sign for the same for $1,845.24 for Sherry Gallamire and Anna Knapp to attend the Academy One Foundation of Labor Relations and the Iowa Public Employee Labor Relations Association Fall Conference in West Des Moines, Iowa, scheduled for September 13 through the 15th.
So moved.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Next is a motion that the travel request submitted by Amanda Fezremire, Human Resources Director, be approved and direct chair to sign for the same for $531.08 to attend the Iowa Public Employment Labor Relations Association Fall Conference in West Des Moines, Iowa, scheduled for September 14 through the 15th.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
Said a quick thing. So this will mean that our office, our official office, would be closed for those two days. Obviously, we will be available, you know, in case of, I'm going to communicate that to department heads early on, but so staff know. But we're very available, you know, remotely through email and things like that. We just won't, our office will be physically closed for the 14th and the 15th, and we should get your consideration.
Very good. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All is opposed, same sign. Hearing, the motion carries. All right. Item E, the motion that the travel request submitted by Rory Giving, Facilities Director, be approved and direct chair to sign for the same for $494 for Brad Metcalf to attend the Prima Heartland Conference hosted by the Public Risk Management Association from September 17 through the 19th.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All is opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Next is item F. This is a motion that the request for purchase of capital committed submitted by LU Information Technology Director be approved and direct chair to sign for same to purchase plotter, printer, Canon IPFTM-304 with scanner for $9,643 to be used by the auditor's office.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Al?
Good morning, Board. Al, you IT Director. Yep, this is a plotter that's replacing one that's been missing for over a year and a half. So they've been desperately patiently waiting for a replacement. So any questions I may ask or answer?
Al, is this budgeted money or ARPA?
This is budgeted, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a couple of questions, Al. I said I noticed in your email, you mentioned that this included a scanner and not all of those that made the proposals, I guess, had scanners. Is that a requirement of this proposal, or is it just that the scanner was part of the other two that were submitted?
Yeah, this, so the scanner is a feature that they really wanted. I think as we move towards digitizing everything, it is, it is an important component. Initially, we did, so the two you see on there are also the same model, it's just they don't include the scanner. The, what was budgeted, it was within that budget, but when you add the scanner, it did increase the cost over the budget. Mr. Veder has agreed to cover the difference in costs, so we can accommodate the scanner.
Al, was the, was the original RFP, did it ask to include a scanner?
We quoted for with and without.
Okay, thank you.
And could you answer the question, or maybe Grant can, as to what's being scanned with that scanner?
I can't tell you what all, in what all cases will be scanned, but this, you know, allows us to scan large maps, I think primarily, but it would be available for any very large documents.
So large documents only for the most part?
I'm sorry?
So it scans large documents only for the most part?
It's a very large printer. And, you know, it's, it's just easier to do a lot of the stuff in the platter room with a large printer, scanner, plotter.
Okay. So we didn't, weren't able to do that before, it sounds like, but this allows us to do... us to do something that we haven't been doing?
Yeah. I don't know if they had that capability in the Engineers' Office or not.
The Engineer currently has a plotter, but it's on its last leg. It just failed recently, so they're kind of desperate. And I believe this, the idea of this new one would be kind of a shared plotter, and maybe the Engineers can purchase another one on their own or just kind of just share this moving forward. It is a 36-inch wide scanner, and I believe the old plotter that the auditors used to have also had that, but that, like, so that one, I wheeled that one out of here to the recycling company a long time ago. So that one, but that one lived a long life. What about us?
Okay. Well, you answered the question. I guess I was wondering about other departments sharing it or needing it, if that was the case. So there is kind of a shared use. That's great. I guess my last question is just to Grant. He didn't, they said he was willing to pick up that like 2,500 or whatever that cost is, about 30% increase in his budget that he wasn't planning for.
Yeah. We reviewed our budget, and we believe we'll be able to cover it in a couple of areas where we have unanticipated lower budget amounts.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you both.
All right. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. And last is, we've got a motion to approve the Bowls of Love food truck to use Blackhawk County grounds on September 15, 2023, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM in the northeast parking lot of the Pinecrest Building located at 1407 Independence Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item nine, any reports or information from the Board? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moving to second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.